We are twelve oh five, so why don't we go ahead and call the meeting to order?
Great. Um, I will do a quick informal call then. Um, Councilmember Rathmo.
Present.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Present.
Councilmember Middleton is currently absent. Councilmember Kavanaugh and Councilmember Matavetski are also present.
Okay, this is a planning committee meeting to discuss the local law twenty-five oh one. To prohibit eviction without good cause. We want to start with amendments.
Uh, I'll start with mine. Mine was the the related to the effective date. You had some discussion back in December that it might make sense to have a effective day that sixty days after um the filing. Since this has kind of been pushed out further, um, I don't think that's appropriate or nec- necessary at this point, um, and I don't. The chance that there's going to be a conflict with the filing that happens, I think is pretty minimal. So I wanted to remove that and just try to get this in place as soon as possible. Protection's in place as soon as possible.
Can that, can we talk through, so the process of filing with the state? So theoretically, council votes to adopt or not, the mayor has the opportunity then to weigh in correct? To uphold or veto.
Yep.
It's a local law, so the mayor must hold a hearing.
Okay.
And then he could sign it, veto it, or leave it alone.
And that's a thirty day timeframe, correct?
And last year, I think it be pretty consistently used whenever it was legislation I put forward, pretty consistently used the whole uh thirty day period, make his decision uh at the end of it. Which oftentimes was a veto for no signature. I don't think I got a signature on any legislation I asked from myself. But so thirty days, then it can be filed and that turnaround to the state is ten to twenty days. Sarah, I'm looking at you, the expert for filing with the state.
Mm-hmm. Um, so we file it the very next day after it can be filed, so right after that evening meeting that occurs. We send it out to the state that same day. It typically takes, I would say about two weeks or so to receive the letter back. What I will say though as a caveat is the effective date is when it was filed at the state, not when we received the letter. So the letter contains the actual effective date of filing with the state, which is typically a few days prior to us actually receiving.
But you don't know that date until you get the letter.
Correct. Correct.
That's clear. Thank you.
So it's like I, I think that as a, it could be after, after passage, two weeks to forty-five days.
Would say ten to forty days is a good rough estimate of how long it takes them to communicate with us and get that done.
Okay. Thank you. Do we want to talk through any other aspects of the effective date?
Um, the the idea, I guess the effective date is like if there was a holdover filing that was in process. And then the law passes, it might affect that filing. And I think what, what I have heard is that they like the new law would could affect, but I think it also depends on how the judge, judge is operating. And the judge and say, I think it's like, well, you got it before, or now this law isn't affecting. So that's but I don't in, we, from, from the data we pulled, there's like around there twenty holdover filings. So it'd be maybe forty filings would have the potential to be in, in conflict if they were they didn't meet what was in good cause.
The
There's some very
It seems like it would be ideal to meet with the judges to encourage a uniform application. Is that something within our purview?
Anytime you're crossing over like this or sticky, I don't think it's taking.
Right. Yeah, I don't, I don't know that they would either. Um, I had some come like correspondence just for, just during campaigning. To and try to parse that out a bit, and I'm not sure that I got clarity either. Um, I wonder, I think what they can take is like a written recommendation, so there's no um, so if we're able to, to pass something like that on collectively, that's a possibility. Is it worth looking in?
I, I think, I mean, I think we should definitely like formally notice the courts.
Yeah.
Or, or local courts that it's been filed, or at least it's been passed so that they can kind of preemptively prepare and do whatever education they need to for themselves around it. Um, but I don't, that education wouldn't be administered through council like I don't think that's appropriate at all. But at least there's, the notification should be so definitely take care of that.
Anything else on effective date?
So I just, I, I had to cut out to switch over to the computer as I was exiting my other meeting. Um, so the, if I caught it right, so it's, there's a thirty day window just for us to, once it's, once we pass it or once, once there is a vote, which the likely outcome is it's passed, as it, had, vote hasn't taken place yet. Then there's a thirty day window for the ma- where it, the mayor can do his three options, which are sign it, don't sign it, or veto it. If it's signed, well, so, and then you, Robert, you mentioned a public hearing on the mayor's side. Um, how much of a window of time does he have to schedule that?
That, that's the thirty, it has to happen within that.
Okay, so it's thirty days before the public hearing.
He can hold it at any point within that window. Um, it's, it's just that he has that window.
If he vetoes, does it have to come back to us?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
What kind of time does that add to it? Or is it just, it just?
Ah, well, the veto has to be presented at a regular business.
Which we can vote to add a regular business meeting is what we have done in the past.
One time last year that it was.
It's very annoying.
I see.
So, okay, so thirty days for a public hearing. And then, so the, and then, um, if, if vetoed, then is there a certain amount of time that the veto or the non-signature, like what does that at, add on to the thirty days? So if, if we're looking at like the maximum timeline.
If it lands the day, if he vetoes the day before our business meeting, it adds one day, but I think there's a window for us to respond to a veto, which is two weeks. Is it?
I would have to double check. Day number.
I think it's twenty days. That's.
I, I believe, but I also believe that you all are obligated to consider overturning the old veto as we've been doing once. This leading to, let me double check the charter and quote that rather than speak that.
And then you were saying the next day it assuming it jumps through all of these hoops, the next day it goes to the state.
Correct.
And then that filing date is the day that it takes effect.
But we don't know the filing date until we get the letter that has the filing date on. I did learn that if you don't put any date in your legislation, it takes effect twenty days after filing.
I think what I'm hearing too is like plenty of time to prepare for implementation.
That's how I interpret it. And then also, I think there's already landlords that are taking action in response to hearing this and the opposition kind of presenting it as a, this guy is falling type scenario. Um, so that's, that's the concerning piece for me and why I have the urgency.
So it does have to be at the next year following.
Do, do we um have a sense of what, how, what window, other um, legislation, like for the other cities that passed it, how much of a window they put? Did they put no, no days, five days, ten days?
No days.
They, they all put no days?
Yeah, or I, I guessing it, it would just revert back to state law, which is like twenty day. Unless, unless it's set effective immediately.
The, the typical.
I mean, like, I have the Ra- uh, Rochester one right here. Let me pull it up.
And the typical form language is that it takes effect upon filing with the state, not that there's no date, but then it's upon filing with the state, so upon receipt of that letter, you could verify the date.
Seems to be the same as immediately after filing.
I don't have.
Yeah, I'm looking at Rochester. Rochester's language says, uh, this local law shall take effect upon its filing in the office of the Secretary of State as provided for by section twenty-seven of the New York State Municipal Home Rule Law.
Yeah.
So it's not, um, would not be a unique move to pick that as the timeline.
No. Robert, you said.
No, I, I, uh, I mean, what I liked about Rochester's process is the ordinance they passed in addition to the law, which creates an educational mechanism, which creates a, a monitoring mechanism, essentially, what has this done? I, I don't know that we have the resources to do that, but I would like to somehow commit to coming back in a year and seeing what the numbers are like and what, what has happened, what has transpired, or that is the form of.
Yeah, so we.
Or gathering numbers formally or having another town.
Right. We have the, the data science group that was involved, um, uh, ended up selecting Rebecca's project, right, with the eviction tracking. Um, they might be a good group for us to approach. Um, they have a lot of connections on campus and they're already starting to be tapped in relating to housing. I don't, I don't know what your experience with working with them is, but.
I think the question that I would have is we've consistently identified the lack of a local enforcement or monitoring system when it comes to the expanding expanded tenant protections even as far back as twenty nineteen. So if we're going to implement something like that, and that was somewhat the onus of the Fair Housing Advisory Board, uh, we just also ended up not having the full capacity to track. My question would be, do we limit it to good cause, or do we identify the other areas where enforcement is weak and try to build a new network to expand existing agencies capacities in that enforcement? I think my preference would be all of the above. But that's certainly up for continued conversation.
And I would say I'm particularly interested in monitoring the effects, or if we can, of the thing that we did since.
Yeah.
Have had a hand in, um, but whatever apparatus couldn't get to that information if they're you know, the other information's right there, you know.
Yeah.
Pluck, then why not?
We are going, so the, the spring twenty twenty-five semester with the data and digital studies students is going to include tracking eviction trends as at least as they're available through the New York State eviction dashboard, so we would have a pretty solid idea of what those enforcement trends are, but all of this is assuming, I think more often than not, what it is that we are challenged by is the rate of illegal evictions and warrant of habitability cases that aren't necessarily legally viable once it gets to court, so none of that's really going to show up in the eviction data.
But that's something else that's important to try and get a hold of, right? Like, if, if, what was a, at least a legal process and a holdover eviction now becomes some sort of backdoor eviction.
Right, because we are, I mean, that's already rampant and it's not being, it's technically like illegal attempts, well, self-help evictions have already been changed to a criminal misdemeanor uh, rather than just settle, that happened in the twenty nineteen expansion, but Binghamton Police Department in particular, the Sheriff's Department, they're not consistently treating it. Nope.
Prosecuted or.
No.
Misdemeanor.
I mean, we had, uh, legal services met with Paul Matisse at the beginning of his term to familiarize him, that he assured the group that he would include it in his monthly meetings with departments. Um, but in foiling that data, it's not tracked consistently enough to represent whether or not it's being enforced. So there's I would say though, we could probably limit monitoring to like five or under particular trends that are most concerning, uh, which feels manageable.
And this, but you're proposing that Fair Housing would handle this, or this data group of university or we're not?
No, the Fair Housing Advisory Board was originally just funded for one year. Um, it was extended through May because the group is working on uh, a website as well as a worst evictors list, um, and some other key pieces of information that they hope to make publicly available. Uh, but we've not identified a funding source in perpetuity for it. Um, it's in discussion, but I think the entity that might make sense to take that over could be the Human Rights Commission. Particularly because at least the other human rights commissions that I've talked to, they're primarily dealing with housing-related complaints and issues. So it's a possibility. It doesn't have to necessarily be that avenue, but it wouldn't be out of the realm of current practice.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I'm, I definitely want to monitor what we can, but then it, I the difficulty I see is that there's, there's going to be an effect, like, Robert, if you were to have a, uh, excuse me, Councilman Kavanaugh, if you were to have a conversation with a tenant, um, that there was some influence that this law had um, in your conversation or like negotiation around a new lease. And it never went to the courts, like, how does that, how is that, like, reported unless anecdotally?
Correct. It's, it's hard to capture.
Right.
And that, what is or is not making.
Right, so we, I had an extensive conversation with the deputy mayor down in, uh, New Paltz, and she was kind of talking me through how, how this, what this law actually looks like. Um, and she said, well, what it looks like is, hey, there was this large building. Um, it had a mix of students, seniors, and some professionals. Uh, they reached out, because, uh, to the deputy mayor, because they were upset because they're got huge, uh, proposed increase in rent, and they that, they were told basically like, okay, well, you know, we have good cause and effect, like you, you remember what your rights are and go and, and have a conversation with your landlord, um, and they did, they said, hey, you can't raise it beyond this amount per this law. Um, but this is what we can actually afford. Um, and, and it is a re- rent increase, but it's not the full amount, and they just sat down and have, had a conversation and figured out a viable lease. No one was evicted, um, everyone is still paying rent, and everyone was happy. Um, so the way it was talked to me about, uh, about it with, um, places where it's in effect is that it really is uh, the main first thing is that it's a negotiating tool. When, when, when something happens to you, you say, well, I have this protection, let's discuss it. Um, and it didn't go to, didn't go to court, didn't, wouldn't get captured in any sort of eviction stuff. It was, um, just people dealing with, with something and having a piece of paper to back them up from their local government.
I think the only way we're capturing what doesn't get to court, because we're capturing Binghamton Tenants Union is, um, still consistently doing court watch, so that's being captured at the actual court level, but Binghamton Tenants Union is the only mechanism that we have to capture illegal attempts. Um, and it's certainly not consistent and capacity is limited there too. Do we want to keep chatting about additional ordinances, or do we want to get back to the amendments? It's all good. I'm just wondering. We still have two amendments to talk through.
I think we should go back to the amendments and then we can talk about.
And then we can, additional legislation.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Councilwoman Matavetski, can you outline? D and E, please?
Yeah, so, um, basically, uh, in, in Rochester, they identified some of the same, you know, obviously from all of our outreach and talking and engaging with the community on this topic, um, there is questions about uh, definitions, um, and we were originally, um, it was not clear that we could add definitions or make any changes beyond the selection of size, uh, number of units uh, in this law. Um, Rochester worked with their state reps um, is my understanding, and, um, we're told that this was something that was, uh, legal and they worked with their corporation counsel, and they added these definitions just to, to add clarity. Um, again, these definitions kind of match what, how the law was explained to me as I've had conversations about its intent, um, so I don't think it, that these definitions are changing the intent, but it's just making some clarity, right, in the law. Um, I believe someone mentioned that actually if you dig into something in the states, you know, like nuisance has a definition, but you have to do kind of these layers of digging, um, this keeps it right with, um, right with the legislation, so the legislative intent is, is, uh, transparent. So, uh, again, uh, the definitions, so I'm proposing to add the term nuisance as used in good cause eviction law for the city of Binghamton shall mean either a public nuisance or a private nuisance. And the terms withdraw from the housing.
Wait, can we, can we camp out on nuisance?
Yeah.
I had a question, but what's what's your thought?
My, my so I, for this amendment, um, I don't see that, like, I, I know that nuisance is outlined in state law, and I guess there's um, a point to reiterating that, um, or like making it just more available, um, and accessible, but I don't to me that this amendment doesn't do that. I think E does, that creates clarity, but I don't see how D for the, like, the definition of like a nuisance. I, I guess, and I don't even know the rea- I don't have like that much opposition to, um, defining that it's a public or private nuisance, but I don't know why it needs the definition. I just.
I have the same question. What's compelling about the distinction?
I think there's just, um, from, uh, this is not based on the conversation, but just my kind of guess on it, is that, um, you know, there's kind of been these, you know, questions of like, what, what is a nuisance? Like, if, if they're not like running a drug ring out of their apartment, like, does something else qualify? Um, so I thought the, I thought it just kind of, the way I read it anyway, is that it, um, clarifies that it can be, um, a nuisance that is not like a police en- engagement type of nuisance, but maybe I'm.
And my, my thing, I, I feel like that's outlined in state law, but there's I guess this doesn't hurt. I don't see it hurting anything. But I also don't under, I don't understand this one. That's the second one.
There's, so nuisance would be grounds for removal. Nuisance is not a type of eviction. Anything involving a nu- nuisance would be objectionable tenancy. I think Willa represented that while during the town hall. And, but that doesn't, it didn't seem to be broadly understood by, by landlords, uh, and nuisance certainly came up as the primary concern aside from not being able to significantly increase rent, and then when, during the town hall though, and this is where Councilman Kavanaugh really appreciated what you represented in terms of the like adjudication adjustments. Certainly said like the burden of proof even more so on the landlord to prove that nuisance. I think, I, I mean, I'm with Nate. It doesn't seem to hurt. I don't know what it clarifies, but I I don't feel strongly against it. Do, does it clarify anything for you?
Well, I, 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 again, I think it might, again, in many respects, I think it does represent a difference between, um, all right, this property perhaps has been cited for
Lockdown.
No, no, lockdown is a different law, and, and that's going to be an interesting situation if these two things rub up against each other. Which I don't think is going to be a common thing, but, but I can see it happening. Whatever, the, the, the property has received citations for uh, under the noise ordinance or I don't know, maybe X number of garbage violence, something like that, that is public um, public citations, government action against the versus perhaps residents in the building or a landlord outlining what has been going on in this property that is a public, or is a private issue that doesn't rise to the level of police involvement, perhaps, or public citation.
Okay, so theoretically, a landlord that is bringing an objectionable tenancy case and identifying nuisance as the grounds would be able to say this is, it's in the public category, this is included, or it's in the private category and how it's included.
And maybe Corporation Counsel could outline the, if there's, this is common legal parlance, uh, you know, and, and there's apparent distinctions in legal process because, you know, between private and public nuisance.
For me, it's just kind of reiterating the intent, that our intent is that if someone is uh, causing problems within the building, we're just reiterating that that is not, that that they should not benefit from this protection. We're not trying, you know, I, I, I know that's the whole point of this, right, is that we are trying to protect good tenants and keep them in their apartments. Um, but just kind of, uh, yeah, I, it, so the, uh, the Google AI just, you know, I asked it to explain the differences and it just says, a, a public nuisance refers to an act that is unreasonably interferes with a, a right common to the general public, like polluting the river, while a private nuisance is the, an interface with a specific individuals using, uh, use and enjoyment of their property, such as a neighbor playing loud music late at night that disrupts your sleep. Essentially, a public nuisance affects the wider community, whereas a private nuisance only impacts a single person or a small group of people directly affected by the activity on a particular property. On a particular property.
If that's accurate, then I, I don't have any issue with that at all.
But I, I, I can call Corporation Counsel as well. I haven't, I haven't, I, I can call. After this meeting too.
Okay. Any further discussion on D? Okay, want to head into E?
All right. Um, so uh, the next one is um, the term withdraw from the housing market. Or removal from the housing mark, rental market shall include a temporary removal or withdrawal from the housing market. Of a housing accommodation for the purposes of making significant repairs or improvements. To a housing accommodation where such removal or withdrawal is evidenced by. One documentation demonstrating the specific work to be accomplished and the timeline therefore. And two, an attestation that no rent or analogous revenue will be collected during the period of such work.
So. Thinking about how this would operate. A landlord would say to tenant, I am evicting you because I'm withdrawing this. Unit from the market because I need to gut and rehab it. It hasn't been touched since nineteen forty-two. And uh, tenant would say, I'm perfectly happy here. I don't want to leave. And then, but, so we're proceeding on eviction. Based on us removing from the rental market. And so in court, you would require these two. Forms of proof. For this to be a valid reason for moving it from the rental market.
Right, so it, you could, basically it would clarify that you can't just. Take it off the rental market for a month, not do any improvements, and then put it back on the rental market. I think that's part of it, and part of it is just explicitly stating that. We still want people to improve their property, right? As we know. Lead asbestos, some things, there's, you just, you cannot do those renovations without removing the tenants. But we certainly don't want to just always have lead and asbestos in perpetuity. Because there's not an opportunity to improve properties. So my hope is that it, it both. Prevents people from playing games where they're just. Quote, taking it off the market and without any sort of proof of their intent to do anything or any work being done. And also makes it clear that we're encouraging improvement um of. Housing stock.
I think the scenario I'm most familiar with. That would relate is the lead hazard. Reduction program where there's, but there's relocation parameters built into. It's not an eviction. It's a like temporary displacement so that the remediation can be conducted. With the requirement that that household's. Returns to. But there wouldn't be any. Return requirement. Under this. Correct?
Correct.
My, my initial thoughts is kind of, I. This is. How I, I pictured the off the market um. Piece functioning, but I do think it offers a lot more clarity. So there's like less room for interpretation. And I think it's, it's, it's actually really valuable because we had those questions. And now it's, now it can be outlined. So it's. Yeah, I'm in, I'm in favor of it. Yeah, but it's like, it shouldn't. It also, yeah, we've already stated that it's, it won't be an excuse for eviction because there'll be like. A little bit of a burden of proof that you're hiring a contractor or. That you've got a, a report of. Lead that needs to be addressed, eh, something to that effect, and I don't know. Specifically what documentation would be. Preferred, but. Again, this, that only goes. In front of a judge if a tenant is executing their right to it.
I think this will be an important, I mean, with this amendment or not, if any of the ones requiring that documentation. Or this attestation. The ideal again would be that we can monitor by property. Because if they're saying that no rent is going to be collected, but the next week after they. The vacate date. That location pops up on. Craigslist, I'm not currently suggesting how we monitor this, but it pops up on Craigslist as an available listing. Like those are the, that's the nitty gritty of, and we see landlords doing that often. None of that is to, I support this amendment. I think it does add clarity and I appreciate that clarity. Kind of going back to how we're monitoring and ensuring enforcement. Just to note, Corporation Counsel's flag on this potential amendment was simply that um. If you're going to provide documentation, then the entity to which that documentation would be provided should also be clear. So if it's being provided to the courts, then it should stay to the court. I think it does in the. Those in order of law.
I mean, I, I did. All of the effect of this is going to happen in court, like. Right, like you're evicting. Why are you evicting? Because I'm reclaiming the property to live in versus because I feel like evicting, like this whole thing is giving.
Um, just that's a little, yeah, I think in the actual real property law, that. The times that it needs to be submitted to the court. I will ask, we pass out a long time when we are drafting.
But as, as a, from, sitting from the tenant's perspective. Your landlord comes and says, I'm not renewing your lease because I'm going to pull this property off the market. I'm gonna do some renovations. You can say, you know, please, I would like to see. That you have a timeline and, and uh, you know, a, a work plan. And, I mean. To, to have that conversation to decide whether or not. You believe the intent of your landlord, they provide that information, the hope would be that you would say, hmm. The law explicitly says they're allowed to do this. I, I better start figuring out my housing situation now. This is not going to be a. A winning issue. Or they say, I'm not going to show you any of that, and then you're like, hmm, I wonder if they're really planning to do this renovation. Then um, you may consider a court option, but like, you would know what, what they need to provide. To make their case and ask them ahead of time, so you know whether or not they actually have a case and hopefully. Everyone is on the up and up and there's no court action taken at all.
Uh, I think for tenants, it's almost. It's hard to assume up and up. So the language to establish, so the landlord is not renewing the lease because the landlord seeks in good faith to withdraw the unit from the housing rental market. To establish this good cause in an eviction proceeding, the landlord must establish good faith to withdraw the unit from the rental housing. Market by clear and convincing evidence. Which is under subdivision one of section two sixteen. But I think what the law clearly establishes is that. During a proceeding, which would then presume what's already been stated, that any evidence being presented is being considered by. A judge.
I'm not opposed to. Uh, adding a word into legislation to say that it's provided to the courts. If. That's what our Corporation Counsel wants, I don't, it doesn't change the intent. If it makes them more comfortable. I'm not standing in opposition to it.
It don't make this easy to read. So two sixteen, section one. It's, it's, section two sixteen, grounds for removal of tenants, uh, section one is no landlord shall remove a tenant from any housing accommodation covered by section. Two hundred and fourteen of this article or attempt such removal or exclusion from possession, notwithstanding that the tenant has. No written lease or that the lease or the rental agreement has expired or otherwise terminated. Except upon order of the court. Order of a court or competent jurisdiction entered in a, inappropriate juris. Judicial action or proceeding. In which the petitioner or the plaintiff has established one of the following grounds for good cause or removal or eviction. So I, I think it, it's redundant, but.
If, if it prevent, you know, if it helps people. On the face of it, easily find the information rather than having to do a deep dive.
Then, so I isn't actually helpful in terms of who it. Like every presumption is that it's during the eviction proceeding, so would be the court. I simply outlines that provided no judgment in favor of the landlord may be granted pursuant to this paragraph unless the landlord establishes good faith. So it's like good faith piece that this seems to add additional clarity to. Right, every other presumption is that the court is determining good faith.
I don't think we need to change.
Any other thoughts?
I don't have anything else.
I will just. Say that I am uh. Still, I'm concerned not about the causes. And it's sort of meet above the law, but the, this uh. The window of uh, lease renewal is concerning. More than half my district's school students, um, this will certainly affect how they all. Are accustomed to. Securing and. Renewing their. Housing accommodations and there is a, uh, in its uh. This represents a significant. Shift um. And it, most of them are not. In a disadvantaged position um, in life or financially speaking, but this will be a source of anxiety for. A lot of them.
Do you mind representing, just since we're. Folks will have the opportunity to view this, like the timeline concerns.
Yeah, so the, the way the student rental market tends to function. Is that um, students essentially begin looking for housing for the following year. Very soon after they return for the current. Current. Academic, thank you. So. Come back from summer vacation, it's like August or September and they start looking to rent for the following June. And many leases get signed, you know, before Halloween. For occupation for the next academic year. Um, and they will still be able to do that, just the city and the cotton vessel, uh, but not Binghamton, presumably. And I think also. Playing into that is the decision to whether uh. You choose to live on or off campus because that process starts much earlier than. Ninety days before. The summer. So. It's. It's a concern, it's a concern for many of the. Residents, or the short-term residents of my district, and that's, I just need to. Voice that. And I don't know if there can be any sort of. Future, I, I monitoring again and possibly future amendment somehow. Tweet the system. I don't know. So.
The, the biggest difficulty for that will be this, for, this first year since all the leases have already been, well. I, I spoke with, I spoke with one, one of the large students um. Housing groups and they have seventy percent or over seventy percent leased for next year. So if the current students living there, this goes into effect and the current students living there. Decide that they want to use their good cause rights and stay on. And they make that decision in that ninety day window, leases have already been signed for their replacements. Um, and so that uh, becomes a legal issue for them because they have. Uh, through good cause, uh, legal obligation to the current tenant and they've signed leases. Prior to any of this process, starting at the city um, for next year. So they have a legal obligation to the people that are planning to move in as well. Um, I did speak. Uh, you know, as I said, I, I reached out to New Paltz, um. Because they have a SUNY, they have a lot of student population, uh, um. They, as of yet, hadn't seen any problems. I reached out to um, Ithaca. They also, as of yet, haven't seen any problems with it, um. But um, there certainly could be problems. And when I spoke to the organization that, that I know, um. Councilman Hotchkiss and Councilman, Councilman Rathwell spoke with, uh, was it the? Right, where did it go? Blanket, uh, Housing Justice for All Organization, they. The answer I got on the student housing stuff was that situation arises, the courts will have to deal with it. Um, and the company is just gotta figure it out through the courts, who gets to live there and who doesn't get to live there and. Figure out what the remedy is for the people they leased to, even though. Uh, this law wasn't in play when they made that lease.
I mean, there is one large student. Housing company, I guess we could call them. Uh, we are already seeing frequently in eviction court. In many ways because they have existing students who have. Not opted to vacate, um, so I'm not.
You would expect to see this issue arise.
Well, I think, I mean, in some aspects, it's already arising, but it's, it's more that this clarifies that. That annual displacement. Is no longer kind of mode of operations. Is that an accurate representation?
I don't, I don't know. You, you have, you have to say it again.
So if the I mean, if current process existing protocol is that students. Only commit to one year and that's the preference of landlords, that students only commit to one year.
No, I I would say, I mean, that's broadly speaking, uh no, when you do you usually you seek for, you seek to renew. You want current people's day because turnover is expensive, leasing is expensive. It's, you know, it's just that that decision happens fairly early on. And there are always hiccups with that too. Not always, but there there are hiccups that happen because, you know. People end up not returning to school for whatever reason or decide to go abroad or, you know. Uh so there there are certain hiccups built into that process, but overall that the seasons get made relatively. You know, early compared to like normal person. You know, who who's not looking for housing, you know, ten months away from that moving. Um so, you know, when the when the state reforms came in in twenty nineteen, I mean, this was a lot of this was that was this was a headache. In for situations where, for example, you'd already collected. Certain security deposits or funds running ahead of time, things like that, but it was a one year. And everyone adjusted. This is kind of a permanent change to. Culture of the system, so. Obviously, the boss is going to be handling it, if it's handling it, I know.
Rochester.
Rochester has a significant student population, but not not as central to the market as Ithaca. So I and I I know this, uh I know this some uh landlords and some reaching out from here up to there to. See if there's any effects so far.
And and none were reported, at least in the conversation I had of a real estate. Landlord that was concerned and reaching out to. Ithaca to understand what was happening up there. The people that they reached out to in Ithaca told them they have not seen any issues. Which is also, it's also important to to restate that there's lots of concerns of what ifs, but in terms of what. People are actually seeing, those concerns aren't at least at this time panning out. It is a sh- short time since implementation, but.
My my thoughts around like specific. Excuse me, specifically the the leases that have already been signed, it's just. I think there there's a timeframe to just be like, there's a. There's potentially this new law going into effect and proactively being like. This list was signed for your apartment. Um you do have a a new right. To renew here, but I I have this lease coming in, so I just wanna know like what your intention is and like that's. That's that proactive action, I think, is like it gonna be necessary to cause like the least um. Headache uh for people, but I think in my mind after the first year. Or like settling like this cycle, that it will kind of uh it'll fall into place. But but it'll be a a.
The biggest risk is this year.
Yeah, shit, yeah, I think handling leases that were signed. But there's with like the the.
I don't know, the biggest risk is this year because so again, the majority of the folks that are. In a place now probably already found their next place anyway. Right, so it's it's the it's the following year where where we're we're looking at a. Whole different model of leasing that's gonna be interesting.
Isn't it one that's more if the general preference. Is stability in the tenant's stay, doesn't that so, doesn't this support that?
I mean, that's your hope, but 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 I I a lot of groups just don't. Stick together, or if you have a mixed group, you might have two seniors.
You study abroad, you make a decision to study abroad. You go away for a semester, you do an internship somewhere else.
Room model, not the like individual unit.
Right, but you have. Four people renting a unit and two of them are graduating, so. The other two, maybe they're also off doing something else, or those two are gonna find a new couple of people to move to a new place. So it's it's the. Turn. I mean, I don't know, what was your college experiences? You stay in the same place for three years or four years or did you move around every year?
Moved around every year. And it was, I was in a spot that was like. Not in like the normal leasing cycle, so it was like that was my first year and then. So I was kind of. It was so unnatural for me to go from that to like, as soon as you move into a place, you look for like a lease for a new spot. That was kind of jarring, but.
I don't know. I don't know. It's concerning again, this is this literally a very significant portion of my my district, my constituents that want to deal with this.
What do you, I mean, there there's like a lot of speculation around this, but is there, um I kind of saw this. As an avenue that like student, there's always been like a gotta keep students in the area. Um but does that ever happen or do you have it situations where it's like students that are like. Maybe they get a part time job and they're like no longer enrolled, but they're still leasing.
Oh, let's stay after.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
For whatever reason.
Yeah.
Yes, okay, that happened, sure.
When people don't always graduate. And not everyone living in student housing is students. That's also important to remember.
So this is a change. I'm trying to understand, is it a change or is it a risk? Cause we're using a couple of different words, like are you saying it's a risk to operations or are you saying it's going to be frustrating because it's a big change?
It's going to be. It it will certainly upset the current system. Is it an existential risk to student living in Binghamton um? Some landlords would say, yes, I would not put it that way personally. Uh it it uh be be I I think there's a lot of. Environment's been created, the culture of downtown and the amenities that we have, I mean, there's there's a lot to say for. What's already going.
And there's a housing shortage. There's nowhere else to live.
But. You know, there is, there is a little risk.
I think, and I think the reason that I'm trying to get at, like when I read through every analysis of impediments. To housing opportunity, it is particularly the culture that we've built around student housing that. Is detrimentally impacting local families. And so if it's a culture shift. So many other populations within Binghamton have had to endure a culture shift to their detriment. Because of what we've built up around students, this is an anti-student, certainly not anti-student landlord, but if the word we're using is balance. This still feels aligned with that.
I guess I'm less concerned about the business model. I I think in terms of that risk thing, it's really this what this first, to me, the the big thing I see is. This first year of implementation because we know that all of these leases have already been signed. And we know that people now have the option to stay in place. Um and they're.
Well. Depending on the implementation timeline, it's. You'd be very much on the border of, I think, by the time it goes through.
Well, we're talking about. Like, was it was thirty days for the. Public hearing and then maybe twenty more days, so we're talking about like two months, so. So that's, we're already, so February, March, basically, so it won't be the end of the semester.
No, it's gonna be close. Somebody will assert a right and end up in court over this probably, but not very many. And I just paid very many people. Doing that in the student sense, it's it's uh more the ongoing.
It's certainly fair to bring up, and I think it's helpful to understand it. Uh so that we can continue to have conversations with. You know, landlords like you and your constituents who are asking that question. Do, is there more discussion on amendments, changes? Do we at any point discuss, is this?
I don't think there's an amendment I could make that we're truly allowed to make at this point in time that would address this issue, or I would do it.
Is this.
Do you have one in mind?
I it would, it would be. I I in this I have to have it, do some research on and have this new conversation with with cooperation council and. Probably the planning department, I don't know. At car routes. Or something like this could happen in in um just in the, for for example, in the Overley District. Or whatever we're calling it, it is. But that wouldn't be fair to the. Didn't has a downtown, so I I don't know. Um and I don't know that it's fair to create it for them.
My opinion on that would be it is not.
So. But we have created this district that has recognizes, you know, the student population that's. We have special rules for.
And you say that that carve out specifically is for the ninety thirty to ninety day lease renewal period.
Correct, okay. Like and I I and I would certainly support. Otherwise protections being replaced for 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 that, simply both making that window. Longer or different.
You're still offered your lease at just a bigger window for that district.
Exactly. If I had my brothers, that's so sort of I would propose, have proposed, right? So, you know, you are offered the opportunity to renew, you have all the good cause protections, um you just have to make that decision. Longer than ninety days out, but. Those are my thoughts, but again, I do not know that there is a amendment that could be made to this right now that's. You know, we've been told we can only make these kind of limited amendments and definitions, so I don't think it can be done right now. Going forward and in monitoring the law and in past, it's something I would think of that.
Gotcha. Is the. Well, if you had a window that you thought was reasonable, would you put it out to like six months or?
That would be a vast improvement.
Hundred twenty days.
Um you know, that would get us, yes, and in. That would, that would be, uh that might even rationalize the whole system a little bit because you do have a mad rush at the very beginning of the year now, but it doesn't seem necessary. So. Anyway.
Luke for thought.
So then we wanted to discuss the uh additional legislation.
The what?
The uh the other other pieces of what potential partner legislations.
Are we deciding that today too?
I don't think we're deciding it, but um I think it was just like more kind of context around options and things that we can. Put out af- you know, once this is, this process is complete, um that there are. Additional pieces as part of the rollout that we can pass.
Some of those pieces. I don't feel like they have, it's one of those things where like I don't think that they have to be like legislation, but we can still commit to. But I it doesn't hurt to have it passed as legislation either, like the continuing like education. And and monitoring, I I think those are.
Right.
Both really beneficial, but I don't, I gotta I'll review what the.
So the three things were an implementation task force. Which is the council, the administration, tenant organizations, land organizations. Then uh evidence-based evaluation, which in their situation calls for now RFQ. Force them to come in and.
Study.
Study, uh which again, I don't know that we have the resources to do that, but. Nice thought. And then similarly, an RFQ out for uh uh to create an educational campaign, educate tenants so that they know.
Not just tenants, also landlords to help them with their leases. Um New Paltz didn't do it as legislation. They they are already had the council set up that a landlord tenant council. That organizes workshops. It, a lot of it sounds like it was really being driven by the deputy mayor. And that the council was basically helping her with her outreach work on it because she's very passionate about good cause. Um and and housing stuff. Um but so she was able to have like these workshops and pro bono attorneys. Doing stuff and and all of that um to supplement the law.
BNY Fair Housing is already contracted to do tenant and landlord rights. And responsibilities education throughout the county. The relationship with the city has been a little bit more interesting lately, but they're all, they're they're got. They're down here in February to do a training, like they're still actively scheduling workshops at the library. At least quarterly and have already, they're part of the Fair Housing Advisory Board. They've already communicated that they'd be willing to help with education. Bill services the same, legal aid, I don't think has the capacity. Um they're they're strapped. Um but I think legal services, particularly with the uh they put worksheets like one page, one pagers together. That are really helpful. Um so I think we have. The resources available to us who have already communicated their interest and or are already doing education. And so to meet with them, plus the added element of Human Rights Commission, when we talk about the. Some of the internal recourse aspects. Um I mean, I think we have the struc- the infrastructure.
Think would be helpful then to at least, if I'm not gonna, again, we we I don't have the resources to do ordinance like this, like these. Or if we could have a release with. Here are the resources to help with education implementation. Here's the people you've talked to that are that are standing up to help. Education to help with the, you know, these concerns, to help with uh, you know, and how we are hoping to monitor this. And in general. You know, evictions and tenant landlord concerns in general, you know, going forward.
Yeah, New Paltz has a handbook.
I think, yeah, and this reminded me, there's a, I intend to do a like a frequently asked question page that can be hosted on. City website and also have good cause like resources just linked like right there. Um that would be that that would be a starting place. Um and. So everything's like compiled, um but then that could be, that could be built out more when we're. Developing. If we do choose to develop the like landlord. At commission where there's like continual education and hopefully I would I would like. There to be mediation, I kinda I throw this around, uh but I think there's. Be like the start of a eviction diversion program where it's just like there's a mediator that's involved, so nobody has to go to court and. Maybe both parties can be satisfied through. Mediation rather than litigation. It's like optimistic, but I think it it's that nobody likes going to court on either side of that, so I think that's a a. Looking into something like that more deeply is like is a win-win. But yeah, lots of, lots of thoughts.
I I spoke with the, some of the people, oh, now I'm gonna, now I'm nervous to pronounce the word, re- realtor, am I saying it right? Realtors Association last night, uh I I'm suggesting that maybe there's a way for us to partner with them. On doing lease training um for landlords, um you know, to to. Um, for landlords, um, you know, to to act. I I mean, I've I've lived in situations in Binghamton where my landlord didn't have a lease, like there was nothing, like they're completely open to like. Um, like, you know, the more, and of course, this is a while ago, but you know, there's a lot of regulations going on to people that. You know, previously operated just as a handshake and you need a place to live. Pay me some money, you can live here, kind of situations, um, and, you know, I wouldn't want people like that to. To get in trouble because they, you know, don't have the support mechanisms for. For coming into compliance and for just protecting themselves, um. Uh, you know, there, people are, landlords are gonna need strong leases with this, I think, um. And so I I suggested to them that that if, you know, if they could organize some sort of workshop. Um, maybe there's some way we could promote it or something to help drive landlords to get their, you know, they're gonna have to have. Um, good cause information as part of their lease, um, but there may be kind of key things that bigger landlords. Um, know about and would suggest to the the littler folk to add to as protection into their leases, since we're saying. Um, you're gonna need good cause, that means if it's not a public nuisance or a private nuisance, it needs to be a violation of the lease. So these leases need to be done uh more professionally than some of the ones I've experienced or.
I do also think it's inevitable. What popped up after the twenty nineteen expansions. Were just a lot of readily Google, Googleable sites about like landlord loopholes, here's what you need to know as a landlord and how to get. How to, uh. Get, what's the word, be served essentially, uh, like. Disregard these like things that, so any kind of formal. Education that produces something in writing where we know it's occurring and can. Again, somewhat schedule or monitor. It's, I mean, the other, the loophole pieces are gonna pop up for landlords and they're gonna be Googling all of that too. That was, that was me supporting if if GBAR wants to do landlord workshops, fine, but I also think that's something that CNY Fair Housing. Uh, and legal services are accustomed. Doing.
Yeah, I mean, whoever, I I just was representing that I had that conversation last night. Um, it was an idea, you know, if that's a group that landlords trust. Um, and they seem to have some amount of resources, obviously, they put a lot of effort into lobbying on this, um, both at the state and. Um, regi- more regional lo- level, maybe they have more bandwidth and capacity to assist in um assisting landlords.
Hmm.
I don't have anything further.
I don't, I mean. Anyone want to motion to adjourn?
Make the motion to adjourn.
You have to second it yourself, Rebecca, second.
I'm on time, no.
Yeah. Thank you. No, oh, I got it, it was last year, we're still adjusting.